Pass by in the uh...
Call the regular city commission meeting Tuesday, December 11th, 2012 to order. May we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Let allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There take roll. There take roll.
Commissioner Bushy?
President.
Commissioner Crisier?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Ravino?
Here.
Mayor Costelli?
Here, we're all here. Next item is consideration of the following minutes, public hearing and zoning board of appeals meeting held Monday, November 5th, 2012, and regular city commission meeting held Tuesday, November 13th, 2012. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move the minutes of the public hearing and the zoning board of appeals meeting held Monday, November 5th, 2012, and the minutes for the regular city commission meeting held Tuesday, November 13th, 2012 be approved.
Is there support?
Support.
Questions, comments? May we take a vote?
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Ravino?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisier?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is the dispersment report. Amy.
Payroll and accounts payable for the month of November was provided to all of you prior to meeting. Payroll was sixty-six thousand five hundred ninety-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents. And accounts payable was five hundred thirty-five thousand five hundred twenty-five dollars and eleven cents. Publish one hundred ninety-nine thousand five hundred forty-one dollars and fourteen cents was payable in tax liabilities.
Questions? Is there a motion to accept the dispersment report?
Mr. Mayor, I move the November dispersment report be approved as listed.
Is there support?
Support.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Ravino?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisier?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is consideration of supplemental appropriations A 2013 dash zero zero one through fourteen.
Good evening. So you have in front of you, we have four amendments this evening. These would be the first amendments of the 2012-2013 fiscal year up for recommendation. We are about halfway through the fiscal year. So you have four in front of you that are affecting four different funds. The first would be that of the general fund, which has majority of the activity. Overall, we are recommending an increase in expenditures of about thirty-two thousand dollars. A few line items in particular, we are requesting an increase in the capital outlay for the purchase of the new police vehicle and equipment that goes along with that. We are requesting an increase for police part-time salaries. I know we had, the police chief was kind of off outside duty for a little while and we had to bring in some additional support there, as well as just an increase in the gas line to make sure that we're keeping up with the gas prices and where we're at in that department. Also, some utilities in the recreation, as well as some additional monies for elections. After this November election, there were some significant changes that the clerk had to undergo with some of her supplies and things like that that were, you know, presented by the state that we really weren't anticipating. So some additional lines there. To help fund that thirty-two thousand dollar increase in expenditures, I am recommending about twenty-four thousand dollars increase in a couple of different revenue lines. One is actually some money being transferred in from the city's drug forfeiture to help pay for the purchase of the police vehicle and equipment. But in the end, these amendments would recommend a use of general fund fund balance of about eight thousand dollars. After we had our, back in November when we had the presentation for the audit, the general fund did end June 30, 2012 with about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of fund balance. So these amendments would recommend to use about eight thousand dollars of that to fund some of those expenditure increases.
And the drug forfeiture money's been sitting there for some time waiting for an appropriate
Yes, that money can only be used for police-related activities. So that's actually the dash zero zero two amendment that you have in front of you that would be requesting the transfer from the drug forfeiture to the general fund. The dash zero zero three amendment is related to the water and sewer fund with the Maywood project that was undergone. There were, this is just properly recording the residential sewer replacement program, so it's really just the revenue and the expense. It really doesn't have a net effect on the fund, but we want to make sure that we're properly updating the budget for that activity. And lastly, again, tying into the Maywood Street project in local streets, just making sure that we are properly amending the cost of the project for that expense and using some additional fund balance to cover that.
Questions?
Do, Molly, with the, what were you talking about? Oh, with the, the property taxes, so that needs to also still be marked, but it's not already in?
Well, we're collecting all throughout the year, so when we do the budget back in April or May, we don't have concrete figures yet. You know, our levies don't come in and go out till July 1st. So we're working off of very good, but still estimated figures. So, you know, looking at, we're about halfway through collection period, actually more than halfway because collection period ends, you know, the end of February. All indications are that we might have been just a little bit under budget for revenue, so very cautiously, I'm only requesting a five thousand dollar increase. I don't want to make sure we get too far ahead of ourselves, but the way things are going and the way that our, all of our numbers from the county are looking, we should be safe there.
And then with the utilities, the twenty thousand dollar thing, now what is that?
I believe that it has to do with the rec center, some of the water and other utilities. And I will also just, we did have a, we do have a line in the budget for contingency, which is sort of out there to kind of help us, you know, be able to absorb some of these unexpended costs. I am recommending about a fifteen thousand dollar use of that, but we did have a fifty thousand dollar line item there, so we're not using all of that contingency. We still have, I don't want to use the term cushion, but we still have that in there to help us with some of the unexpected things that happen to come. I know the past few years we've been hit with some storm damage and things like that, so we want to make sure that we have, you know, something in the budget to help us with some of that unexpected stuff. We still have half the year to go through, so.
Other questions? Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the supplemental appropriation appropriations A 2013 zero zero one through A 2013 zero zero four be approved as recommended.
Is there support?
Support.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Ravino?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisier?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Molly. And... Before we continue with the agenda, I thought we'd invite the cameraman to be front and center. You.
You want me to be there?
Yeah, I want you to be there.
Scott, we need a camera.
Last meeting Ted announced his upcoming retirement as our cable coordinator. My name is Spike Surprise, so I'd like to officially congratulate you on your retirement and wish you well and give you something to remember to Spike.
Thank you. Do I open it now?
You can open it whenever you want. But I will tell you, you're a big contributor.
Well, thank you so much. As part of my report, I was going to say this in conclusion, but I have to thank you so much for allowing me...
I've never seen you speechless.
Well, I'm speechless a lot of times. Thank you so much for allowing me to have this privilege to be the camera person for the city of Pleasant Ridge. It's quite an honor. I learned a lot about the city, about videotaping, broadcasting, and I realize as a citizen also, I have to thank you, not only for allowing me to do this, but thank you for your dedication. I lost my notes. Commitment and your time is, I, sometimes I hear these proposals that come up in motions and I go, holy cow, how do they ever figure out what's the right thing to do and they're doing such a great job? I have to give you applause too. Thank you very much. I, I'll be watching this on cable TV maybe next month or coming up. I thought a lot of people would be clamoring. But thank you so much. I appreciate it and thank you, audience, for watching. Actually, there are people watching. I do get comments that they see the broadcast, so...
Ted, no thanks for your assistant, I mean...
My lovely assistant, Elaine? I have to thank Elaine for my assistant. Thank you very much. And I'll be back in a couple of minutes with my other report. Thank you. Thanks, Scott.
Governmental reports. Commissioner Zach.
This is my last and final Pleasant Ridge report. Denying it for how long? But I couldn't have, I wanted to come and give it. Couple of controversial things, nothing like Lansing, fortunately. We've been accepting a lot of grant money, but there have been a couple of issues, the animal control area. We've been hearing from many people for months, and I'm sorry to say, it hasn't been resolved yet. I'm very disturbed that we haven't come to a conclusion. But I can tell you, the people that have been speaking out at public comment have submitted a list of things that they want. They are being reviewed by the animal care facility along with Commissioner Chair Mike Injil. He's been spearheading this to go through things line item by line item. And then from there, they will meet with the representatives from this group to address those concerns. I can't tell you that we're going to do every one of their asks, you know, there's a position, but at least, you know, what can we do here? Some of the major issues that I've heard concern is not using different types of social media particularly to post when you find animals, so that you can return them to their owners, and the euthanasia being a concern particularly, and that there's better, you know, practices than have been done at Oakland County. Oakland County's kind of in the middle of the road in these two different areas. Another issue that was brought up is that the present animal control director, former commissioner, county commissioner Larry Obricht is retiring. And Brooks Patterson appointed another gentleman who's been working in the community corrections department, and the animal care people are concerned that, what does he know about animal care and best practices? And I have no say over that appointment, you know, the county exec can appoint whomever and, you know, I hear their concerns, there's nothing I can do about it as commissioner, unfortunately. Another area that shouldn't have been controversial, but it was, we set the stage several years ago, we approved to purchase a certificate of their type of bonding, certificate of participation type of bonds to fund out our retirement healthcare. It was roughly four hundred and fifty million dollars, so that Oakland County has funded their legacy costs. It was very proactive, I voted for it. So recently, it was brought before us again to set the stage to refinance these as bonds. There was a change in legislation in the state of Michigan that allows us to issue them as bonds. And bonds would be more favorable, and the rates now are much more favorable. So it has to go through the commission process to be ready to go to bond when we can do it in about eight months. In concept, it's great, it can save us about, we're saying over the course of the, maybe eight to ten million dollars based on our rates, and it sounds great. However, I did not vote for this. And the reason I did not vote for it is that if you read the papers, we've been using this one bound, bond council forever in Oakland County. And then part of the checks and balances is to, we have an investment advisor, there's checks and balances between the bond council. Coincidentally, the investment advisor is the daughter of the bond council. And she bought the company a few years ago and they have the same address. And so I was concerned, real perceived conflict of interest, that this just wasn't good. So the county came back and removed the investment counselor from the paperwork, said we'll go to bid, but I still don't know that this person's going to get the bid or not. We tried to add in some clauses about bringing it before the commissioners to approve the purchasing contract. That didn't go through. We brought it before us to deny any familial, close familial relationships. Again, it's good fiscal analysis, you know, my expert here, and that didn't go through. So I did oppose it. The vote went down party lines, I just didn't think it was the best practice, although in concept, I do think this is a very good idea for the county, and it was voted on favorably. Want to remind you, we are all, all of our meetings are now webcast, particularly the committee meetings are really where more of the action happens. We had a very exciting meeting last week. I went to the county and normally we meet in this one committee room A, but we had a deer jump through the window. And literally during the meeting? Before at 5:00 AM. So the whole window was smashed out. I'm told that the fizzle of these people had to come and get the deer out, and the deer was okay other than a bruise on her leg. So, but we ended up meeting in the auditorium, but it was an interesting meeting.
So do you now have one of those dancing deer signs?
I don't know what's there, I hadn't been back since then, but it's a funny story. That's all I have for you tonight. Any questions for me?
Questions? Elaine, we officially honored you last month, but thank you, thank you, thank you for your many years of dedicated service and your reports and coming around, and you're still invited Memorial Day.
Thank you, and other times.
And other times.
Thank you, it's been a pleasure, and I want to thank you all for everything and honoring me last week, or last month, it was very special, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Other governmental reports.
I'm Amy Butters, and I'm here to talk to you about school district issues. I was recently elected, I'm going to be taking office on the school board in January. And I thought that I would come talk with the commission a little bit tonight. I, when I first made plans to come talk, it was a little bit more relevant. Things have changed, so I have to sort of wing it a little bit. Basically, I wanted to come talk to you about some things that are happening at the legislative level. The, there are a few bills that you may or may not have heard about. There's been lots in the news and lots, lots of discussions about it that are really making some pretty major changes to the way education is delivered in our state. And this is, a lot of it is coming down from Governor Snyder, and there was a, there was a forum last week, Thursday, that the school district hosted. Dr. Vicky Markovich is the Oakland School Superintendent, and she came and spoke. We had a crowd of about two hundred and fifty people, about, which I thought was a good turnout for Ferndale. And I just wanted to make sure that the commission and that the community knows a little bit about the bills. I don't want to get into it in detail, I just kind of in a nutshell, I just wanted to make sure that people knew about it. There's something called the Education Achievement Authority, and it, for EAA for short. And that, one of the bills is addressing that, that entity, trying, trying to make it bigger. It exists right now, right now, it is there for school districts or for schools that are not doing so well. They're in the, it's something called the persistently low achieving category. And they, they established this EAA to take those schools over. The bill that's in, in the legislature right now is looking to expand that authority. And the people that are not in favor of this, of this bill are, are really worried that it will lead to statewide control of, of our schools. And that's one of the main, the main concerns about this legislation is that it takes away the control of the school districts from the local communities and gives the control over to a statewide authority. That's really the gist of it. There are lots of other details that go into it. Of course, now, today in Lansing, it was all overshadowed by the right-to-work legislation. There was supposed to be some action, I understood, on this legislation today in committee. I don't think it happened because of the right-to-work action that was going on, so... But we're not, we're not dismissing it, it's not going away. We're still wanting to make sure that people out in the community know about this. Our legislators, Ellen Coogen Lipton and Vincent Gregory, the people that are representing us in Lansing, Pleasant Ridge, have said that they, they will vote against this legislation, they are not in favor of it, but we really still are encouraging people to, to contact them, to let them know, to show your appreciation for their stance on this. And also, you know, there are lots of other ways to get involved and to reach out to some other legislators. There's a website, if you do a Google search for Michigan Million Voices, that will, that will get you there. And there's all kinds of information that you can find online. And, you know, feel free to check out the Ferndale Schools website also, they've posted some information. So I don't need to get into any more detail, I don't think, I just really wanted to just make sure that people are aware and know, you know, where to go to get more information, and we're expecting, we're, we're sort of thinking that maybe there won't be much movement now in the, before the end of the year, but come January, we know for sure there's going to be, you know, lots going on, lots going on, so. And one other thing I just wanted to mention, just regarding the schools, I wanted to let, make sure that everyone knew about, there's a concert tomorrow at the high school. It's a choir concert and orchestra concert, and they're doing Vivaldi's Gloria. And I'm really looking forward to it, and I think it, I know that the kids have been working hard on it, and that's a big, important, you know, hard, difficult piece, so I think it'll be a good one to, to check out if you, if you're able to. I think it's 7:30 at the high school tomorrow, Wednesday night.
Thank you. Questions?
Amy, what day is your first meeting, or is the new school board...
The new school board, we've actually already taken the oath. So January 1st is when we officially become school board members. The first meeting that we'll be sitting at, at the table, is an organizational meeting on January 7th, which is a Monday. Wish us luck.
Good luck.
Anything else?
Other questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other governmental reports? Recycling report.
Okay. Good evening, commission. Our last meeting was a very short one. Actually, it wasn't a meeting, it was a gathering, but I got some information for you anyway. Recyclables for September was twenty-four tons, October twenty-one and a half, and November twenty-nine. So it's, it's always increasing. I remember a long time ago, it always held at about twenty. That's one part. The bin blitz is over for November, and we sold five here in the office and two at Sacra, so the grand total is seven. Well, it's a small town.
A small blitz.
During, during some of our meetings, they had some discussions. This is something that we might look forward to in other meetings, but I believe it's in, well, it's in New England, I think it's Vermont. When they throw out the trash, to get it picked up, you must have a recycling bin adjacent to it. And so it's in the contract over there that if there's no recycling bin, they don't pick up the trash. Something that might come up in the future. Just other information, Ann Perry might be speaking about the transit study for Woodward Avenue, and it's tomorrow night, starts at six o'clock, and it's at the Ferndale Public Library. I, I'd like, they want your input. Oh, I'm going to give some input. I think that they should advertise more. I'm in, you're in advertisement, and I think that they should have for Thanksgiving Day Parade, their new biodegradable, or, what's the bus that runs on?
Bio diesel.
Bio diesel.
Biopower.
Have that filled up with either customers or clowns or something that they'll go down to Woodward Avenue Parade. You know, that's something, just a little bit of advertisement. But anyway, you put your two cents in tomorrow night at six o'clock at the public library about the transit. As you know, I like to have visual aids. In the past, a few of you remember, not too many of you remember, that at one time I came here with Christmas lights, lit Christmas lights, I did a little demonstration. I thought that was one of my extraordinary ones. But I'll just make it sort of simple. You know, Santa's going to be in town pretty soon, and there's going to be a lot of wrapping paper. Don't forget that the wrapping paper that my lovely assistant will give me...
How quickly Elaine was replaced.
She couldn't handle it.
So here's wrapping paper that almost everybody's familiar with. Remember that you recycle everything except the cellophane. And that's it for that part. Now the other visual aid is this.
We have to get a new cable guy named Ted, so he can recycle the cup.
No, this is mine. I had this for about twenty-five years or so. Hard to believe. But anyway, I thought, like, right now, you've got water in your, your plastic recyclable container, and why bother with the recycling? You know, I think it would be neat if all the commissioners and staff would have their name, first name or last name, or boss, or secretary, or whatever, treasurer, whatever, attorney, on there, so that when the new camera person who doesn't have the character generator for rolling, so you have your name on it, so you would have your name exposed to the audience right there, and that's about it.
Speaking of which, what happened to my name?
Yeah, that's right.
See if he had a mind.
That must have been the board of review that did that.
You almost lost your...
We got one over.
Okay. I think, the last, I forgot that one part that you, you sacrificed a lot being a commissioner on your, on the commission, so it's a big sacrifice, that's what I want. That's the one word I think I forgot when I was thanking you. Any other questions about recycling or anything like that?
Thank you about the tape on the wrapping paper. Is it okay to leave it on?
Yeah, it's, it's okay to leave the tape on the wrapping paper. Very good.
Thank you, Ted.
Oh, my pleasure. Thank you.
City commission ladies and... City Commission ladies, our reports, Rec. Commission, Commissioner Crizia.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to, uh, remind, uh, our community that, uh, the playmakers are currently fundraising for the Gainesboro Park, uh, playground bill. There are four dollar window cleanings, uh, available at the community center and City Hall. Tied, uh, to our fundraising efforts, the Pleasant Ridge Recreation Commission is sponsoring a Pleasant Ridge Health and Wellness Fair. And it'll be Saturday, January twelfth, uh, from ten to four P M. in the Pleasant Ridge Community Center. Uh, and what we'll be offering is a whole day of health and wellness themed classes. Everything from a soccer workshop, zumba, uh, karate, yoga, Pilates, uh, dance instruction. These will be forty-five minute classes that you could sign up for and, uh, schedule a whole day of activity. There will be free babysitting and snacks for sale throughout the day. And from ten to twelve, there'll be free blood pressure checks. One thing, uh, we would need to emphasize is that to, to size the classes, we're really requesting that you pre-register. And you can do that, um, from now until December twenty-first. You can do that at the community center desk, or you can call two four eight, five four two, seven three two two, and register for one of these classes. I think it's a exciting opportunity to get the new year kicked off in a healthy way and the Recreation Commission is, uh, excited. So, um, please keep that in mind, uh, for, uh, January. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Plant Commission DDA, Mr. Bushy.
Well, we, once again, we didn't have another meeting last month, uh, but we are having a joint workshop coming up this coming Monday.
December seventeenth.
December seventeenth, uh, with the City Commission, Planning Commission DDA. A lot of items will be out for discussion, uh, you know, uh, sidewalks on Woodward being replaced, uh, their new master plan, uh, and direction that they'll be going and looking for business district, district on Woodward Avenue. And so, uh, hopefully we'll have more to report for you next month.
Thank you. Historical Commission, Commissioner Rubino.
Historical Commission held their meeting, uh, last Wednesday. And they have, uh, ordered the flabby tiles that are gonna be provided to the homes that have reached, uh, since the age of a hundred years. And they'll, uh, they're gonna be in green, they ordered twenty right now because by the end of next year, there's gonna be, we believe seventeen homes that have qualified for one hundred years since they were constructed. Which is pretty unique for our community. There will be no charge, they're gonna be a gift from the Historical Commission, and they're gonna be given to the homes that qualify. The other thing we talked about is that the speaker series is canceled for January. There is something they're still working on, hopefully we can do something in February or March, uh, we're not sure. The other thing is that, uh, the Christmas tree lighting, uh, it was successful, uh, having, um, pictures taken with Santa. It, uh, it turned out to be a very large group, I think it was one of the largest groups that are tree lighting. And there was tremendous amount of children. This commission room was used as Santa's headquarters. His chair was there, and other children came in and sat down and told him exactly what he wanted. And Santa was very impressed with how great the kids at Pleasant Ridge are. That's basically all we have going on right now. It was a great success.
Thank you. Commissioner Perry, everything else?
Okay, well, the transit group, um, as Ted mentioned, um, tomorrow night, Wednesday, December twelfth, is going to meet, um, have a public outreach meeting to discuss the Woodward Transit Alternatives Analysis at the Ferndale Library from six to eight P M. Everyone is welcome, and there will be many people there who can listen to comments and suggestions as well as answer questions, and they'll have a presentation as well. There are flyers on the podium, so you can see, um, there's some additional dates as well and locations. And I attended the Berkeley meeting, and there was some really good information, and it was a really great group that, of, um, citizens that came. And this is being put on by, um, the, the consulting group as well as SEMC. Then on December nineteenth, I'm, uh, related to this, I'm gonna go with the steering committee from the Alternatives Analysis to Cleveland. Um, and we're going to ride the, the Bus Rapid Transit, the B R T system down there and have a meeting with their health line, meet, um, is what this, their B R T system is called, and meet with the Cleveland R T A. And, um, so it should be a great opportunity to sort of experience this strong alternative that's being studied for the Woodward, um, transit system. The, the R T A legislation is moving forward with all this other legislation that's going on. There are still a couple aspects to it that have not been settled, but, um, it has lots and lots of pieces of legislation tied to it, so everything from funding to zoning and all of these different things are being, um, considered right now. Also, the W A three is working on purchasing the Welcome Center for the Highland Park Model T, um, Ford plant. And the Welcome Center is the building that's right in the front, it's about one, I think it's one point three acres. And it has, right now, you know, as we all know, it's totally empty and vacant and in rough shape. But they want, um, they have over eight hundred thousand dollars in grants, um, as it is right now. And they are working to get, they need to get a match of two hundred thousand dollars. So they're working on some different programs to try and raise that, those matching funds. And the focus of this project is going to be not only a heritage center, which will, um, be the history for all automotive, um, all car lines, and, um, but it will also have, they're very much focusing on making sure that it's economically sustainable, that it's not just this historical spot that, you know, will start to struggle again later. So that is one of the main focuses with that.
It's already been recently used as a special event, hasn't it, that Welcome Center?
No, it's in really bad shape.
Well, I've heard of some special events being at that plant recently.
It could be a different spot there, or maybe not that, because we couldn't even go in it, we, I went on a tour the other day down there, so I thought we would be going in the building, but we couldn't get in it because the ceilings have fallen in and you can still see some stairways, but, um, we went into a parking garage that's back behind it in some of those facilities, but it, it's in rough shape. So, if anyone is interested in, I mean, because this is such an important part of Detroit's history, and I think, I think that they're going to be able to make some interesting thing hap, things happen. So if anyone's interested in contributing or being a volunteer with this, you know, send me an email at aperry@cityofpleasantridge.org, or call City Hall and they know how to reach me. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next item, public discussion items not on the agenda.
Hi, I'm Mark Lachey, thirty-seven, Kensington. And if you have driven past my house, you see that there's a for sale sign. If you haven't driven by my house, my house is for sale. The, this, the news is that, uh, we've had a house, uh, we've had a vacation place in Sagatuck for a long time, and we have decided, Brian and I have decided to buy a house there and move there full-time. So, um, Pleasant Ridge House is under contract, knock on wood. A lovely young, single woman is looking at it and looks like she's going to buy it. Thank you, Robert Campbell. And, uh, uh, we are buying an eighteen eighty-seven, so we should get a green plaque, but anyway, an eighteen eighty-seven house in Sagatuck. And, uh, the funny thing, the other amusing thing is, uh, I looked at the census and Sagatuck has twenty-five hundred people, just like Pleasant Ridge does, so I'm, I'm moving totally laterally except across the state. But I, I wanted to come and say thank you to you folks, um, to the community. I've been here since eighty-five, um, it is an incredibly warm, accepting, friendly, I repeat, accepting community, um, whether you're African-American, whether you're Asian, whether you're gay. It has been, uh, back in, back in the eighties, people forget, um, nowadays, people forget how, um, the LGBT community was either ignored or, um, uh, actually put down. And Pleasant Ridge has always been accepting of us. And it's also true, I've had African-Americans across the street from me for, I think, basically almost as long as I've lived here. It is, it is a tribute to us, um, it is an incredible small community, I go to a lot of cities, and they all think their city is the best. But I tell you, I know which city is the best, and, uh, I don't think that's going to change in a month from now on, I'm a resident of another twenty-five hundred resident community. So I won't, I could go on and on and on, and you have a long agenda, um, and you've heard a lot of hot air already tonight. So, um, I, I won't say anything further, but I had to come by and, um, thank all of you for your friendship, your support. I wish you the best going forward, I, I, I pray there will, and I don't pray often, but I pray there will always be a Pleasant Ridge, and, um, I wish you all the best going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lucky you. So you want a hundred and twenty-five year plaque, if you're.
Uh, my name is Ken Odell, I live in Five Amherst, and, uh, I actually came out to talk about the parking, um, that's on the south side of Amherst. That's, uh, uh, I know they've actually allowed, in the last two years, they've allowed the parking there for, you know, uh, for Mays. And I talked to one of the police officers, I actually talked to a number of them, and they said they did this to help the business out. But I, I believe the city should reverse this decision. I live there in the third house there, um, you know, right at the end of that area which now has, allows the parking. And I don't quite understand this decision, um, seeing as how there's a municipal parking lot that is one block away. That, a lot is, as I see it, I drive past it every morning going to work, and I see it underutilized, uh, on the weekends and, uh, you know, Monday, or Tuesday through Friday. But, uh, you know, what's very typical, I can show you this picture. And that's the south side of Amherst there, that's the McCarthy's Lexus there in first spot with the seven other cars behind it. Delivery's there on the right and also. I was just asking, that's the delivery truck, delivery to the, uh? Correct, yeah, yeah, delivery to Mays. There's also the, uh, right just above the, uh, truck there on the right is the new sign that says Municipal Parking, This Way. You see how effective it is. So, but, it's, um, you know, every morning backing out, we have a single lane. And from what, driving around, uh, you know, Pleasant Ridge, I believe that we are the only non-boulevard street that allows parking on both sides, you know, correct me if I'm wrong. But, um, I just feel that this is kind of unfair, I mean.
Fair would allow parking on both sides?
No.
No, there's no parking on both sides of any street.
Yep, we are it, so, and this is new.
No, there's no parking allowed on both sides of Amherst, except up at Woodward.
Except, right, there's like no sections of any of the, you know, non-boulevard streets allow parking.
That, you know, I'd have to confirm that.
Yeah, I, I'm, I've done a casual drive around, I'm sure I could miss, but, right, I, you know, but. So anyway, um, you know, so now we have the business district, which is now back in the neighborhoods. And again, like I said, with that municipal parking lot being right there, I really don't see a reason for it. The day that that one picture was taken, uh, there was probably ten spots available in that parking spot. And this, that was taken on a weekday, so the businesses were open. You know, anyway, so, uh, yeah, I just really just, I, I think it's unfair, I think it really needs to be thought out, I really don't think, and taking the parking away there and making it convenient for us, um, you know, there's been times when there's a delivery going on, people head up, I've seen them stop, have to back up, drive down the, uh, the alley to actually get out, uh, just 'cause the guy from the Cisco truck didn't, uh, you know, park, you know, move over or anything like that, but, um, it's, you know, like I said, it's not uncommon, it happens all the time. So I think that if you actually made that no parking enforced it, um, they utilize that municipal parking lot a lot here, uh, you know, to its full extent, um, I think it wouldn't impact Mays, I mean, if, you know, hopefully Mays has something better to bring people in besides the good curbside parking. So, but, um, so, I guess in fairness, and, um, you know, just to make it a little bit easier on us on Amherst, I think the city should actually reverse, uh, you know, the decision to allow parking on the south side of Amherst.
Is it the whole south side that you?
Actually, no, it's, it's about the first, well, it's from the Woodward up to the alley, so it's along that, that first building there. So now, once you go down, and occasionally we do get somebody tries to park down there, um, you know, somebody will.
East of the alley?
Actually, yeah, the parking is allowed, yeah, west of the alley, east of the alley is still no parking.
Okay, and so you're not having people park west, east of the alley though, on the south side?
You're talking about by the restaurant?
Correct, it's just by the restaurant.
Okay.
Right, so now, that actually should be like, um, I think it was thirty minute parking when it was Anna's Coffee Shop, and it was loosely enforced, you know, so, um, but, you know, she never had a lot of traffic anyway that used to come out there.
So the parking, now that she just didn't attract people to parking?
Correct.
Right.
And, you know, I, I was, uh, told by another officer that, you know, before, you know, six ninety-six came through, there was a huge parking lot out in front of the place, which is now.
Oh, there was a huge parking lot in front of a lot of places.
Right, so, well, and I, I don't think really we should, no.
They now call that, uh, Northbound Woodward.
Yeah. Right, I know, I know things have changed a lot, I mean, but I don't really think that the solution is to allow parking to actually move back into the neighborhoods. Now, I think there's a, a bigger issue here, and I, I don't.
Oh, really what you were talking about was a change that changed thirty minute parking to longer than thirty minute parking?
Correct, but, but again, there was no, nobody's actually come over there to park anyway. So it really wasn't an issue at that point. But, I mean, I don't think really, I mean, this may not even be a great location for a busy diner anymore because of the loss of that parking lot back in the, you know, eighties, whenever that happened. So, you know, and I, I do think that the municipal parking lot would be enough to handle Mays parking. They don't need curbside, you know, people can walk a block or two, you know, you do it in Ferndale and Royal Oak, you know, to go to places, so. I mean, so, anyway, it's just, uh, like I said, I, I've seen everybody kind of come through, you know, have problems getting by, um, you know, even, you know, we're, they're parking all the way down the street anyway, I mean, nobody can actually even come over there and park on Saturdays unless they have room in your driveway, you know, to park, so it's, um, it's, it's been a change in the last two years, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other items not on the agenda? You've been trying, you've been patient. First in line, last in line.
That's right. I'm Brett Scott, Sixteventhyre, uh, just a quick follow-up to Commissioner Perry's comment on the Model Teak, uh, Paquette plant. They actually are open, uh, usually in the winter the building isn't heated, so you're not allowed up until.
The one on Woodward?
Yes, it's, it's, uh.
No. No.
You're on Paquette.
I'm on Paquette.
Paquette is on.
Way down. Yes, off of, maybe, two blocks.
Yes, and that's a very groovy building, this is a different, this is Highland Park.
Got it, okay, never mind. Uh, second quick question, um, I, I've heard that there is a law in Royal Oak prohibiting bike riding?
You're asking wrong me.
I'm asking to confirm whether Pleasant Ridge has any similar laws prohibiting bike riding on sidewalks or roads or whatever.
It was just downtown sidewalks.
Okay, okay, all right.
And I believe the law, I don't, I, I don't know, but it's a, it's not a, um, a city ordinance, it's actually a state law about riding bikes on sidewalks.
Got it, okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Other items not on the agenda? Back to the agenda. Appointments. Consideration of the appointment of Mr. Conrad Stack to the Pleasant Ridge Historical Commission, term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand fifteen. Call upon consideration of the reappointment of Ms. Carol Zupan to the Pleasant Ridge Historical Commission, term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand fifteen. Perry?
Mayor and City Commissioners, these are the recommendations by the Historical Commission, and I concur with both of these recommendations. I will add before my report that there, um, are openings on the Historical Commission as well as on the Recreation Commission, and if you are interested, please. We do have a couple that recently came in, but I wanted to make sure that everyone in the community knew that there are vacancies on these commissions. So my recommendation is to approve the appointment of Mr. Stack and reappointment of Ms. Zupan.
Is there a motion on number ten?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the appointment of Mr. Conrad Stack to the Pleasant Ridge Historical Commission, term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand fifteen, be approved as recommended.
Is there support?
I support.
Can we take a vote?
Commissioner Rubino?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Crizia?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Castelli?
Yes, motion carries. And rotating off the commission and with thanks from us are Mr. Jeff Hand, Mr. Scott Morrow, and Ms. Shannon Wolf. Number eleven. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the reappointment of Ms. Carol Zupan to the Pleasant Ridge Historical Commission, term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand fifteen, be approved as recommended.
Is there support?
Support.
Can we take a vote?
Commissioner Rubino?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Crizia?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Castelli?
Yes, motion carries. Go ahead, sir.
I would like to first I thank, um, Mr. Jeff Hand and Shannon Wolf, Ms. Shannon Wolf. Scott was not too long, because I, I think he's moving and he was, uh, not sure enough for the meeting, so I think he basically resigned, but, the other two, uh, Mr. Hand and Mrs., Ms. Wolf is a tremendous asset to the Historical Commission. They work very diligent and very hard, um. They worked very diligent and very hard. Sorry to see them go. Mr. Hand's job assignment has changed. He's not able to make the meetings. But when he was there, he was an extremely hard worker. Ms. Wolf was the same thing. Because of the term of, she has to leave. And I'm hoping after one year she thinks about coming back because she is a tremendous asset again to the Historical Commission, and I'm very sorry to see both of them go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Next item is number 12, consideration of the 2013 federal poverty guidelines. Sherry or Amy, who's got this one?
Amy, why, I've got this. Each year for the Pleasant Ridge Board of Review, the city needs to adopt guidelines for people or residents that apply for a poverty exemption to their assessment or their tax assessment, their, um, house assessment or their tax assessment, sorry. So in order to do so, the city must adopt, the City Commission must adopt a resolution laying out the policies and guidelines for the Board of Review to use in granting those poverty exemptions. You'll find in the resolution the HUD guidelines for poverty, depending on the size of the family unit. And then there is a provision in here where the board can look at substantial and compelling reasons that the homeowner has a serious hardship outside of the income guidelines to grant that poverty exemption.
Is this consistent with what we've had before, Amy?
Yes, it is. The only thing that normally changes would be the dollar amount allowed per, for household.
Yeah, have these changed much in the last year?
Uh, they went up about a hundred dollars for each person.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the proposed City of Pleasant Ridge Poverty Exemption Form would be approved as recommended.
Is there support? Support. Questions, Kamala? Can we take a vote?
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rubino?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisak?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Castelli?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is consideration of-
Mayor Castelli, can I ask you a quick question? I'm sorry. So when will the Board of Review take, take meetings?
Uh, they had a meeting tonight. They, right before this meeting, they, they made it December.
With my, my name and the plan.
They meet in March for three days and they meet again in July.
Okay, and so how do people know to make appointments? Do they make them through City Hall?
They actually don't make them through City Hall. When you receive your assessment, which is generally around the end of February, early March, I believe, for Pleasant Ridge. There is information on the back of that assessment of where to call and how to make an appointment. If anyone calls here, we will give them that number. And walk-ins are always welcome at the March Board of Review, but they prefer it if you could schedule appointments, so we know when to schedule the workers to.
And when did you say it is in March? I'm sorry.
Fifteen, sixteen, seventeen?
It's going to be March-
The third week, I think.
Fifteenth, which is a Friday, and then eighteenth and nineteenth, which is Monday and Tuesday. So Friday, Monday, Tuesday next year.
They changed the days of the week, I think, to comply with our charter. It used to be a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Oh, thank you.
Next item is consideration of the resolution regarding Public Act 152 regarding employee healthcare costs. Sherry.
Mayor and City Commissioners, I brought to you, I brought this to you last year for the first time. This item, I am asking the city to adopt a waiver to Public Act 152 that was adopted last year. And what this is, is a requirement for all public employees to contribute toward their healthcare benefit cost. If the city does not opt out of this, I think it was briefly talked about, that the county was the one that sort of led the way on this, and they have opted out for the past two years. If the city does not adopt a waiver to opt out, then employees of the city would have to pay 20% of the cost of their health insurance. The reasoning behind me asking is, as you know, especially communities that are small, our wages do not compare with communities in larger scale cities. And the cost of, 20% of the cost of our health coverage would be exorbitant. I can tell you that some people would have to pay $12,000 probably a year. So I am asking, I am recommending once again that the city opt out of the provisions. This is something that has to be brought to the governing body every year and adopted by the end of the calendar year.
$12,000 a year, is that what you said?
No.
Can't be.
No, it's not. So the employees would have, no, no, it's 1,500, I think, was the max somebody would pay. My mistake, $12,000. Some people pay $12,000, yeah.
And they're currently got a 10% share cost, is that what it is?
And, yes, and I will tell you that we have already implemented in those, for, new hires have a whole different set of benefits. And current employees pay anywhere from 5 to 10% toward the cost of not only of their healthcare, but of their pension as well.
So it's between 5 and 10%?
Correct, some people pay 5, others pay 10.
Now, can Pleasant Ridge opt out and not have any, like, adverse effects to state funding? Like, you know, since this is a state thing that is, is tied to the EBIP stuff?
That actually has us comply with Part III of EBIP.
Okay.
By opting out, you're complying with Part III.
You have to take some action.
You have to take some action. You either have the, the plan, which we have anyway, or you opt out and it automatically satisfies Part III of your state share revenue.
Taking no action, that, not doing 20%, we lose funds, right?
No.
Well, no, you can have a plan. You have to turn in a plan to the state about how you're going to adopt these rules over time or currently, or adopting themself.
So would, so would, like, moving to the 80/20 and then maybe increasing the salaries of the city employees to, you know, come up to that 10%? So it's really a, a neutral cost thing? Take out of the opt-out thing, you know, if we're supposed to be transitioning towards the, is that what the goal is, is the state wants you to transition to the 80/20?
The goal is that this, it, it, the true goal of this, it was designed and written to address the benefit packages. My understanding of the public employers being teachers. It came across and was finally approved, and the only way that you got it approved was that it just encompassed all public employees. Except those hired by the state. They are not, they are exempt.
Aren't they the biggest public employer?
Yes, but they always exempt themselves. And so when it first came out, cities were actually in the process at that time of taking a look and reevaluating some of the benefit levels. And saying that, you know, we can no longer afford to pay 100% of the cost of all these benefits. However, recognizing that some employees with 15, 20 years, that's what they were hired in under. And so it was a gradual increase to start asking active employees and understanding that any new hires would come in more likely under a plan like this, like ours will. To, you, it probably would not be financially possible for you to increase the salary range of your employees in Pleasant Ridge to make up for us having to pay 20% of the cost of the healthcare insurance. I don't think it would be financially possible.
So it wouldn't be an equal, like, okay, so if 10% more of your healthcare is, you know, a thousand dollars, then you, you increase the salary by that? That wouldn't-
I didn't, I, I, I wouldn't, I don't want to say yes or no because I haven't analyzed it that way.
And that's just the, right.
Well, it would be anyway, if you do a thousand for a thousand, you got tax, you got tax problems with that, nevermind. You got the tax issues, and then you got the opt-outs, but you've given them the salary increase. Plus, over the last several years-
Well, then you're not opting out anymore, yeah.
Right now, I'm talking about the individual opting out.
Oh. Oh, I see.
And the other thing is that over the last several years, part of what Sherry has done is reduced the cost by changing the total benefit structure of what's offered. So.
I think we saved $72,000 just last year by some of the changes that we were able to make and then going to a high deductible plan. So I mean, we have done internally some things that have significantly reduced the cost of healthcare benefits in general. Was, we're trying not to reduce the coverage so much. But just to answer your original question-
We're going back even further, reducing some of the benefits available to retirees.
Oh, yes.
Over, over time. Legacy costs have gone down amazingly.
Mr. Mayor, so, so, I mean, we're not being penalized by any chance or anything here, why not?
Not in any way.
So anyway, so it's, it's just, we're following the procedure by following Chapter 3, and so it's, doesn't, doesn't-
You have to do something.
So it doesn't matter.
So, right, if you were to take no action, the 80/20 is implemented for you.
Right, I understand that, but since we're complying with item number three-
Correct.
Scott mentioned, so we're complying with it.
I'm recommending, right, that you take the option of allowing us to opt out of this requirement.
And so, so, so we have people that grandfathered in a 5%, is that what you're saying? Is that what it is basically?
We have people, well, we have many employees that, when hired, were hired under the condition of 100% coverage. Those employees are now paying 5%. New hires are paying closer to this 20% cost, and those in the middle are paying somewhere around 10%. So it's different depending on where you were hired in with the city. And I want to add to you that the only employees you're talking about are Darren, Amy, Scott, and me. Because the police are under contract and they can't be charged yet.
All right, till negotiation.
Okay, well, and I'm not, I just, just, for my interest, for my interest.
Right, I want to clarify that, sure. Right, right, right.
Thank you, Sherry.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the resolution regarding the 152 related to the City of Pleasant Ridge Employee Healthcare Cost be approved as recommended.
Support.
Can we take a vote?
Commissioner Rubino?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisak?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Castelli?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is consideration of establishing a public hearing on Thursday, January 10th, 2013, at seven o'clock a.m. Just listed public comments on two applications for liquor licenses and most, the, we need to be convened at the Pleasant Ridge Community Center. Sherry.
Well, Mayor, we have two pending applications, one for a new liquor license and one to transfer an existing liquor license. The, the one for Cork Restaurant that is looking to transfer has met the crit, both of them have met the criteria under the city's ordinance. I learned today from the state that the Cork applications, they received all the information back from the, the state police check and all of that is in line and in order. So my recommendation is that the public hearing date be established. That will allow the city attorney and I to start working on a development agreement. I would not delay this if, my recommendation is not to delay this any further because, as you recently learned, there is some new bulletins were issued by the Liquor Control Commission and that limits any control that the communities have on the liquor licenses. And there is potential that the state could go ahead and issue these licenses without your approval. I think it has great bearing whether or not you have held a public hearing and what the outcome of that public hearing is. And certainly that would be taken into consideration, but I think no action is not a good step.
And this relates also, when we get to it, to item 16.
Yes.
Is there a motion to establish the public hearing? Should these be considered two public hearings, Charlie, or is one sufficient?
Well, there could be just one sufficient. There actually would be two, but they're combined.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move a public hearing to solicit public comments on two proposed applications for liquor license be scheduled for Thursday, January 10th, 2013, at 7:00 p.m. It will be held at Pleasant Ridge Community Center, Four Ridge Road, Pleasant Ridge.
Is there support? We're talking about holding a public hearing, not talking about granting it.
I will second it, and I have some questions. That's okay.
That's fine.
Thanks. Can, can we get the operating agreements for Mays and Cork this week? Just so we have some time to sort of digest, because I know, I think they exist already, right?
Mays does not exist.
It does not, okay.
But they don't have a liquor license.
The one I have for Cork would apply to Crutchfield Inc.
Okay.
So I'm, you can see that because that'll, that's what it'll be modeled after.
Okay.
So I could send you that this week.
And is that what they have said, it's going to be modeled after? That's what, like, the, who-
The attorney and I are going to tell you.
You're, okay.
Because we're going to be writing it.
Okay, and then the one with Mays, like, have they put together, I, um, I guess I would want to see an operating agreement before issuing a liquor license so that we know what their business model is. Because from what I've heard, they want to keep the same hours, this is more just that try to be able to have brunch-type cocktails and lunch.
I can give you that. You know, I can give you, it's not a formal agreement between the entity and the city. But I can give you the plan of operation if that's what you're looking for. They did submit that with the application.
Yeah.
Are we allowed to review all the full applications to see what's, what you're-
Yes, except for the confidential part.
Right, well, I don't want, I don't want confidential.
Yes.
Okay, that would be great. We'd be able to get that.
Right, I think that's what you're looking for.
Yeah.
Well, I would think that the, to a great degree, the, the Cork Agreement modified for the, for the business plan of Mays is probably going to be the template that would be used for their operating agreement, with the main difference being, you know, their, their business plan, their hours of operation, what it is. So if you, if you look at what you get on the Cork one, reading it together with the business plan of Mays, you probably get a good flavor of, of what Charlie and Sherry are going to propose. Just to, I think we're going to get, the new ones this week is not going to happen, yeah.
Oh, the restrictions and, mm-hmm, okay. But their hours, I mean, because their business models are pretty different, but some of the restrictions.
No, but she's got the business model.
Okay.
Right, I'm not calling it an operational agreement.
Okay.
Yet, what I have that I can give you is the agreement that we had, that we'll, that, use that as a template, and then I'll show you her business plan.
Okay.
And so part of, and main part of the operating agreement is to tie her, tie them to their business plan.
Right.
And then I, we had had a little conversation about, is there a different kind of liquor license that can be issued at this stage when we still have the second class C one out there?
It's all changing with the new chairman of the Liquor Control Commission, who is saying that Liquor Control Commission is God. And whatever the locals have to say, they can choose to listen to or not choose to listen to. The conversation that Sherry had today was to the effect that they could just choose to issue what we have never issued on their own.
Without any of our input, huh?
That, that, that's an issue, that's a question. The question really is, is whether that after you, after you exercise all of your licenses, whether the state then can mandate or just come in and issue a license where it's wanted to.
That used to be the question.
Well, I don't know whether, if you, if you still have one in reserve, I don't know whether the new, that new bulletin is going to be applicable to that.
From what I learned today, it doesn't matter if you have one that has never been issued a quota, so to speak. It doesn't matter, and that the Liquor Control Commission can actually issue that license to another community. Or they can issue now any license to this community. So everything is changing and, you know, there's this item coming up on the agenda to request an opinion from the Attorney General. But these regulations have only been in effect for several months. And from my conversation today, local control sounds like it's just completely gone.
Contrary to 80 years of administration of the Liquor Control Commission.
That's correct.
And why do we still don't have parking?
Well, that's-
Well, that's a site plan issue, you know, that would be an internal-
And can that override the, the, the state awarding a liquor license?
No, because they don't care. They will issue that liquor license to that entity. That, that restaurant may not be able to open here because of parking, but that person still has that liquor.
And this, and, and the city could stop it from opening because of parking?
You can't withhold any reasonable, so if they need the criteria, you have to give it. You have to give approval. But if they don't, then obviously you don't.
But for instance, Mays right now doesn't need for the site plan approval of their restaurant.
Okay.
But if we don't do anything, and the state takes over, and we don't have anything on the books either approving or denying it, then-
They're going to do what they want.
They're going to do what they want, but at least that we take it into consideration. And then not that we're already calculating that we're going to deny, but if we do deny, then the state has to look at that.
They don't have to, but they say they will.
Okay.
Because my question to her was.
I think we should look at it rather than just let them control it.
We require a public hearing, we have an ordinance that, you know, we enforce and we follow to a T. And so I said, if this petitioner comes in and they go through the public hearing and, and they're denied by the local governing body a liquor license. She said, then what we will do is we will then determine whether or not that person gets a liquor license and we will consider what you had to say, but it is non-binding.
I understand that.
And Farmington Hills has already started the procedure to request the Attorney General's opinion, which is why we have number sixteen on our agenda to ask our own representatives to join that request for an AG opinion. Because while Farmington Hills would not share a legal opinion with me because Attorney General's privilege. At the last mayor's dinner, they indicated that there is a substantial ground challenge, the position of the Liquor Control Commission, and they're proceeding with that.
And I'd like to say, Michelle, now since you've had concern about parking over where you're at and getting a liquor license, potentially more business over there, I would consider, talk to your neighbors and make sure you attend that meeting on the, on the ten.
And having these people turn around in their driveways, what they do now.
I think it's important to decide to speak because people need to know that information.
We need input.
Okay, thank you. And neighbors.
Remember, take a vote.
Commissioner Rubino?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Crzyak?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. Next item, number, another public hearing, consideration of establishing a public hearing on Tuesday, January two thousand thirteen, at seven thirty PM. To solicit public comments on a proposed amendment to chapter forty-two offenses and miscellaneous provisions, article four offenses against public peace, section forty-two dash eight-four fireworks. Sherry, before I turn that over to you, in response to a question that came up at an earlier commission meeting from somebody asking on the status of the letter that had been written jointly to the legislature on, on this bill. We were supposed to have a report at the last mayor's association meeting and the speaker did not show up.
Oh.
So hopefully we'll find out more tomorrow. Sherry, can you talk about this ordinance though?
Yes, as you know, in September, this item was mentioned by a resident, it was something that had been sort of spinning around in the city managers and mayor's group about talking about the new regulations that allows fireworks all year round. What I learned was that you can, as a community, regulate or adopt an ordinance to regulate the fireworks, sending off the fireworks. You cannot prohibit. And even regulating, you are limited to certain days as to what you can do. And this is what's being challenged and discussed by many of the mayors and city managers. But nonetheless, by putting this ordinance in place, we would at least be able to control the certain days and times of the year when fireworks could be ignited. So my, the first step in the process is to establish a public hearing and at that point you can discuss it more, but you do have a draft ordinance in front of you this evening.
Before we go down the road of introducing it and publishing, Sherry, I can't find a place where the term minor is used. Was there, did I miss it or is there an intention to have something special dealing with minors in this?
No.
Because it's a defined term.
Yeah.
That's not used.
Yeah. I'll have to, I'll have to check it, so let me check it before I bring it back to you.
Okay. I think I, I think I waded through all the other.
Yeah.
Definitions and found them being used, but I didn't see that one and then we might want to have something special in the rest of mine.
Okay.
Should we put that on for next month?
Well, do.
Yeah, suit it better.
I meant to call you over the weekend, I forgot, I'm sorry. Next item, is sixteen because we have no fifteen or am I missing a page?
Uh, that was fifteen.
That was fifteen.
We just left off then.
It was a.
It was two fourteen.
Two fourteen.
Okay. Sixteen, consideration of the resolution regarding requests for the Michigan Attorney General opinion regarding the Michigan Liquor Control Commission Bulletin two thousand twelve dash twelve, which included changes to the license application process. I would say that, you know, but for the Farmington Hills mayor bringing this forward last month, I wouldn't have known this had happened and Sherry wouldn't have seen anything either.
Really, they don't send you bulletins or anything on your emails?
No.
Mayor, city manager stuff?
We get it from city managers and mayors when you're on the list serve of any hot topic like the fireworks ordinance, that's how I became aware of it. But there has been nothing and I don't think even I'm the city attorney.
This is important.
Yeah, brilliant.
It's done.
Enact it and don't tell anybody about it.
There's nothing to enact, the guy just came into office and started changing.
It's still what it's going to be.
Yeah, this is, this is how I interpret the law. So the, the recommendation of the city manager is to request an opinion of the Attorney General as to the legitimacy of the position of the Liquor Control Commission.
And specifically what the question would read is, does the transfer of an on-premises liquor license from one individual to another or from one location to another require the prior approval of the local unit of government? That's the question that will be posed to the Attorney General.
Do you want to add to that the initial issuance of a liquor license? Because you had prepared that before you had that conversation today.
Okay, yes, I can.
I think it would be good, did we add that for?
Yes. Now, the process is, if I understand it correctly, is that we as a city cannot request the Attorney General's opinion, so we need to get a member of the legislature to make the request. So the, the motion then is to request our state senator and representative to make that request.
Mr. Mayor, I still think that there, that we are in a different situation than most cities. And, and I say that is because I think that most cities have depleted all of their licenses. And I think they're in a different stead because we haven't done that. And I don't know, I, I think there might be a different criteria. And I think maybe we should ask this when we pose the question is if in fact we haven't exercised all of our licenses, whether that, this particular bulletin is going to be applicable to our situation.
That was the last thing, Charlie, that I mentioned to Sherry to add, the initial issuance of the license.
So, Mr. Cooper, if I, if I may, so, so you're saying that if we don't issue our last class C liquor license, that we'd have more control over the scenario or?
Right, right now, right now, as, as I think that Sherry's given us, right now, the way that, as I understand the regs, is is that if you have not issued your last, in other words, you have a license in, in your bank. The state can, in other words, there are certain situations wherein if someone's going to invest a large amount of monies or something, they can transcend the, the municipal authority and just go in and, and establish a liquor license. Because what they're saying is, is that they're going to, you know, make this big investment, but there's no more license applicable, so ergo, you know, we need to come in. There's special licenses, there sometimes are called resort licenses, sometimes are called an investment license, that type of thing, where they can come in without any authorization or any states or government city. That was always our concern here is, is that, you know, we always, what was, what was so great about our ordinance is that right now the city has just absolute, you know, control over who comes in and what their hours are and everything else. So that's something, at least in my opinion, we never want to lose.
So, so if we issue our last class C liquor license, that it may be angry and is wrong, so then we're, at that point in time, staking committee and issue any license within this community and we would have no, our liquor, liquor control ordinance wouldn't have any control over the establishment or anything other than whatever our parking requirements are needed or building.
Well, they would consider it.
No, 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 you can't, in other words, you, you, they'd have to, in other words, they would give you, if you're going to come in and say, I'm going to open up at the old AAA building, I'm going to open up a casino and I'm going to put in, you know, multi-million dollars. So you, you, you get past the requirement of money, in other words, your investment. The state then, if there's no more license to give, can give you a license. And providing that you qualify, in other words, for parking and everything else, then the city has, I mean, the license just goes through. Now, obviously, if you didn't have any parking.
Right.
You know, and they can't comply with that, well then, you know, then, you know, the city could say, no, we're not going to give you an operational license, but then you're in the fight with, with the city.
Right, I understand, thank you.
And my understanding from the conversation today, that is what happened, that was applicable six months ago, before this bulletin was adopted. Because I specifically asked her, we have currently a license in escrow, a class C license. And she said, that doesn't matter, we can take it, we can move it, we can issue it.
When you say we, you mean the state?
Correct.
So they can just take the class C one, that right now it doesn't even matter?
Well, there's some criteria, like the attorney is talking about, the applicant has to have exhausted all other avenues for obtaining a license before the state's going to step in and say Pleasant Ridge, we need that for Royal Oak. It does happen, she said it does happen, and, and it happens, it's not unusual. But the reality is, yes, they're going to at least consider what the governing body is saying in a community, I mean, they're not just going to, I don't think.
Well, and same, same person that.
But we're not as protected as we used to be.
Right.
Period, by ordinance or by escrow.
Now, where we are different from the other communities, they, they are as much worried about having their licenses taken and moved to the community.
Because, yes.
Then.
Because they want them.
They want them.
So my recommendation is, I did call the city manager in Farmington Hills today, and in fact, I'm going to see him tomorrow. I'm, I want to recommend that the city commission meet with the attorney who specializes in this liquor license law. Sit down, I think you need to do that before any public hearing is held. And there's ample time between now and then to do so. And let's get a clear understanding of what's happening at the Liquor Control Commission, if we need to do something while this Attorney General opinion is pending, because that could take, we know so long. And then at least we will be clear as to whether or not it means anything if we issue that second license, it may mean nothing. Maybe we're better to issue it than.
But someone could still buy a license and move it into the city, vice versa, if we're worried about it.
And you're thinking the other way.
Yeah, the other way too, I mean, so it's, I don't really see.
Well, and how does that affect like those redevelopment liquor license and things too, which.
Doesn't affect them, they can still be in there, right.
Well, that's what we have to find out.
That's still on the schedule.
There's a lot of questions need to be answered.
Yeah. Okay, so, but our public hearing is going to be the tenth.
Right.
So, Mr. Mayor, do you need a motion on this?
I do.
We're just waiting for discussion for like that. Is there a motion?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move that the resolution requesting that state senator and state representative to obtain a Michigan Attorney General opinion regarding the Michigan Liquor Control Commission Bulletin two thousand twelve dash twelve, which includes changes to the license app, license application process, be approved as recommended, and that a copy of the proposed resolution be forwarded to state Senator Vincent Gregory and state representative Ellen Cogden Lipton, as well as the Michigan Attorney General.
I support that.
Want to take a vote?
Commissioner Rubino?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Crzyak?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is consideration of traffic control order number one nine zero, Cherry.
Mayor, last month, Commissioner Crzyak mentioned that traffic did block up on Main Street at Kensington so that some people trying to exit Kensington would have a way through, a hard time doing so. The chief took a look at it and felt like it probably would benefit the residents if we were able to install a sign that says, do not block intersection, and it is somewhat effective, he said. So the recommendation is, in order for that sign to be effective, we need a traffic control order. And my, I concur with the chief's recommendation that traffic control order number one nine oh would be adopted.
The only difference between having a traffic control order and not having a traffic control order is that they have to pay a fine if there's a traffic control order and they don't have to pay a fine if there isn't one.
Don't have to tell them.
I know city manager challenged the ticket based on. Is there a motion?
Your honor, I move that the traffic control order number one nine be regarding the Kensington Main Street intersection be approved as recommended.
Is there support?
I support.
Any discussion? You want to take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Crzyak?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rubino?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. City managers report.
I mentioned, mayor and city commissioners, I did mention about applications, we would need to receive them by next week if that's possible. Appointments are due in December and January. It was brought to my attention that the gator bags that were purchased by the foundation and given to residents to help water their trees, many of them have not been removed. I have a feeling some of the residents think that somebody might be coming around to pick those up or collect them or that maybe they're just disposable. They are not, I think can be reused, so if you have a gator bag attached to a tree on your property, if you'll please take them off, put them in the basement, store them somewhere away from the winter weather so that they can be reused. If you haven't noticed, and I don't know that you have, our new police vehicle was delivered last Friday. It always takes forever to get those vehicles prepped and ready for police use. It is an SUV and it is marked in ghost letters, so we're hoping you don't see it if you're speeding.
Oh, and the lights are on, I guarantee you'll see it.
The lights are beautiful, the lights are amazing.
I was, I was walking the dog when they were taking delivery and it was like watching kids under the Christmas tree.
They love it, they absolutely love it. And it's roomy, so it's going to take a little bit of adjustment to drive it because, you know, you sit different in an SUV than you do a vehicle. But so far, the officers really like it. The board review was held earlier today, I didn't have a chance and I know the numbers are not, the hard numbers are not in, but I was told that Pleasant Ridge will be one of the highest increases in the county as far as taxable value this year, so I'm anxious to see that number.
Thank you.
Yes. And finally, I wanted just to talk a little bit about, as you know, I've been looking at a legal opinion and argument as far as moving the, the drain, George W. Coon drain debt off the water bill onto the winter tax bill. I did get an opinion from our city attorney stating that this could be accomplished, and I know one other community that has done that, done it this way, by a vote of the governing body. And therefore, the, the people, the voters would have say only by speaking at a meeting. The cost, I contacted a, a firm that has issued opinions on this very issue because it's, as I have mentioned to you in the past, it's touchy, it's questionable. There are different legal opinion, differing legal opinions on this than have been for years. And the cost would probably be about five thousand dollars to get an opinion on whether or not a governing body can vote by resolution simply to, to add this to the tax bill. Other communities and most of the other communities that, that have added this debt to the tax bill have done so after a vote of the people. It may not be required, I think the cost of holding an election would be less than it would cost to get a legal opinion saying you can or cannot do this. And my recommendation is that this is the way that the city commission should go, so I would like you to consider that if you would rather get the legal opinion that may authorize, if you're comfortable with the legal opinion by the city attorney alone, or if you'd like to get an opinion by the attorneys that dealt with this issue in the first place, at the cost, or if you would like to add this to the ballot of twenty thirteen.
November thirteen.
November twenty thirteen.
Oh, Sherry, we discussed also not just moving the twelve towns drain portion to the tax bill, but, but trying to move some of the other operational costs to the tax bill. And that certainly that latter part would call for a vote of the people anyway, so. We, rather than going to vote of the people for one part and not the other part, it would just be one proposal. And even if, even if we had the ability to move that one part, it might look questionable as to why we didn't just put the whole thing up there.
I agree.
So I'm not asking for a resolution tonight, although. So I'm not asking for a resolution tonight, although it seems like there is consensus among you that that's the way to go. It just seems like it's better practice to do it that way. It's a major change, it's a major shift. And this will allow all of the residents to have some say so. So I will get back to you on what needs to be done to put it on the ballot.
Okay.
You ready, Doug?
That completes my report. Thank you.
I have one question for you. I hate doing this to you, because I... No, no, it's nothing. It's, it's, I have a question that I guess I'm moving on to number 19, which is other business.
I was about to say, other number 19.
Well, I see, I read your mind. I read your mind. So, you know, I saw something in the paper the other day that I really liked, that another community adopted, and that was no solicitation documentation within the City Hall that when people come in, apply for permit to solicit in the community, that you can be documented, no solicitation, and then they are not allowed to solicit at your house.
Don't we have that?
We do, and we don't allow solicitors in the city, other than charity and religious... No one's allowed to go door to door here.
Well, would that stop charities, too, though? I mean, I...
Oh, the no solicitation sign on your front door would have stopped?
This would be a list within the City Hall, that is within the City Hall, so when...
They're running like a no-call list.
Right, when these groups come in here and ask to come and come to your house to solicit for water or for electricity or for whatever else, you give them a list that says, "These people do not want you calling their house."
Do they have to abide by that?
Yeah.
These charities do?
Yep.
Because we don't allow solicitation here.
I know, but if you allow people to come to my door to solicit for Green Water Act or other types, I mean...
I don't know.
You know, I don't know, you know, the religious aspect of it is very, very problematic, you know.
Well, what community? I'll call them.
Is it Borla?
Yeah, Borla.
Okay, I'll call there.
Yeah, they just passed it, and I thought, well, that's a great idea. I mean, you know, I get tired of people coming to my door.
Yeah, right.
Groups that I want to donate to, I donate directly to them, so I don't even come to my door.
I understand. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other other business?
Mayor, if I could, I just want to take this opportunity to, on behalf of my family, I want to thank the Historical Commission for an extraordinary Christmas tree lighting event, and all the employees at City Hall that put on a fantastic event. It was spectacular. My kids thoroughly enjoyed it, and it's one of those memories that I'm sure that they'll have of Pleasant Ridge that will last them a lifetime, so I want to thank everyone involved for that. One thing I forgot to add, in light of the upcoming Christmas, this was during a recreation report, I should have mentioned that letters to Santa are being accepted at City Hall. So any young Pleasant Ridgeers out there who want to get an envelope out to the North Pole, you can get it stamped and sent off right away. And the last thing I just wanted to say, just like Mrs. Butters was up, and she was talking about some legislation that is being proposed in Lansing about changing the structure of education in the state of Michigan. I am very concerned about legislative actions that our state government is taking right now concerning workers' rights in the workplace. And I actually had a chance to meet with our State Senator Vincent Gregory Tip this afternoon on the grounds of the state Capitol, and he shares my concerns. And he wanted me to tell Pleasant Ridge residents, if this is an issue that concerns you, that his office, Representative Lipton's office, and all our representatives in Lansing are eager to hear from everyone on this issue. So if this is an issue that's of concern to you, please take the time and contact your representatives. Thank you.
Along those same lines, I would add that the actions we're talking about tonight with respect to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission is consistent with an assault by the state over more than the last decade on local control. And as more and more of these actions are taken, some legislatively, some by administrative fiat, local control is being assaulted every day from Lansing. When you look at our budget, starting in 2001, the state had trouble balancing their budget, so there were, there's two parts of state revenue sharing. There's the constitutional part and the statutory part. And through both parties, the state systematically reduced the quote statutory part, because they can amend statutes, and balance or help balance the state budget on the backs of the locals. And we are going to take it and throw it again next year. Maybe us less so than others, but they will repeal the personal property tax. And they, while they have promised replacement funding, they're going to think of what they're going to do with replacement funding someday in the future. And their idea is that the replacement funding really ought to be submitted to the voters of the state. That's where it's going to end up. And as part of what's been discussed so far, small communities, and I don't know if we're big enough not to be small, or if we're among the smaller, are not going to participate in replacement funding. So, you know, it's just one grab by a few other in Lansing. I'll get off my soapbox.
Well, how effective is it for our residents to be calling? Because we know our representatives are doing a beautiful job of representing that type of voice, I think, up there. Should we encourage them still to be calling? Because all of these, the education stuff is really scary.
Yeah, they don't know that people are concerned unless people tell them they're concerned. I mean, how many people are around here, read the newspaper, and think, okay, personal property tax is going to be repealed? That's okay, it doesn't affect me. State revenue sharing is being reduced, that's okay, it doesn't affect me. I can tell you it's about over $100,000 a year that came out of our budget on the income side.
That's what I'm sure.
It's only, it's only $100,000 one year, after 10 years, it's a million.
Well, with a different administration in office, too.
Yeah.
So this is not...
This is not party large.
This is because your senator supports you on one piece of legislation. Tomorrow could support a different piece of legislation that could devastate the city. It has nothing to do with their party. So I think it's imperative that people constantly, constantly contact and stay in touch with their legislators.
They don't realize it hurts, these other taxes have to suck them like that, boss.
Well, so what we can do is, can we put, all of their information is on our website, isn't it, right now?
Our state local, yeah, I think all of them are. State and federal.
We have direct access to all.
And we can make sure, can we maybe post on the website a couple of the different issues? Because there are so many vital issues that are being pushed through right now at the end of the year, but also in January, too. I think, you know, I know that education, there are a bunch of things for education that could really hurt.
It's interesting, I think it was last week you called, and you were getting informed and learning about the legislation, the pending legislation on the school reform bills. And then that same day, I had attended a webinar and had been on the phone talking about what's happening with the personal property tax. And, you know, on top of that, there's other issues like these bulletins. How much control does a Liquor Control Commission have to take your authority away? There's just so much of it, and it's, it's, this is the most dangerous time, because they want to get as much done. I'm sure right-to-work overshadowed some of the issues that were going to be voted on today. But I would not be surprised if tomorrow they are voted on again. And you may not know it, so it is absolutely critical to pay attention to what your legislators are doing.
Yeah, Sherri, I think you're trying to get that done, though, and with the personnel limitations we have, perhaps the MML has some way to simply provide us things that could be easily cocked and pasted and posted.
That's great.
I'll buy some.
As opposed to our trying to have to search and research and write, we couldn't do that.
Right. Well, now, is it too late to do anything about the liquor for residents to be able to have their voice heard about this new liquor control?
They're doing that by administrative orders, so the real question is, does the Liquor Control Commission have... The position of Farmington Hills is that what the Liquor Control Commission is doing is not in compliance with the statute that creates the Liquor Control Commission.
Okay.
There's no one you could call to object to that, because that's done.
So even, yeah, all the residents doing...
It wasn't voted on, no.
But all the other stuff.
On that happy note, any other other business?
Happy holidays.
Any other other business?
Happy holidays.
Yeah.
Yeah, after all that.
Sherri, one thing that wasn't mentioned, you know, I'll be all in with the new plans for continuing broadcast of the community meetings.
Well, I met with Jason, you and I probably don't know, Community Media Network. Are you still filming? Oh, I'm sorry. So Commissioner Crisziak and Commissioner Perry, for your benefit especially, I met with Mr. Peter Zach and Mr. Humphries with Community Media Network. They are the organization that is an offshoot of the Cable Communications Authority. And what they do is all, every, and all cable operations. So I asked them to provide a quote for what it would cost for them to come in and record the meetings every month. They are more than able and willing to do that. And then I also asked, because we are unique in that Ted, as long as he's worked here, I don't believe he has spent more than $100 on a piece of equipment. And this equipment, when they saw this, they thought it should go in the Smithsonian. How does it even work? No one really knows. So part of that will be an upgrade for not only equipment, but the sophisticated software that would allow us for live broadcasts on the web, you know, all of the internet available programs, too. So we'll see. I'm waiting for, in the meantime, Mr. Humphries and Mr. Peter Zach are more than capable of running the camera.
And we can always bring Paul out of return.
Allison actually mentioned Paul.
Paul was, I think, 10, was he? Eight or 10 when he went to be assistant?
So we'll be public.
Oh, don't say it, I don't want to hear that.
Is there a motion to adjourn for yet another year?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Merry Christmas and the holidays.